Good evening. My name is Scott Gross and tonight we're hosting a debate of selectmen candidates for the town of Goffstown. And I'd like to introduce them. Richard Manzo, Mark Lemay.
Good evening.
Collis Adams.
Evening.
And Kelly Boyer.
Hello.
So ordinarily, we don't have an opportunity to really debate issues in Goffstown. This is probably the first time that I can remember. And I do want to thank, it was Collis Adams' idea to do it. He gave me a call and I said, "Yeah, sure, I'd moderate a debate." So the format of this debate is pretty simple. There's going to be eight questions and the candidates themselves have submitted two questions apiece. And so they know two of the questions because they're the ones who came up with them. And then we'll be, I'll be asking these questions to all the candidates and they will have an opportunity, if they want, to respond and ask a follow-up to a candidate and that candidate will have an opportunity to rebut. But we're going to try to keep the comments to about a minute for the sake of time. So with that, we're going to start off. And Kelly, we're going to start with you. Our first question involves communication. And as a selectman, how would you assist in broadening the town's reach for engaging with its residents?
Well, this was obviously my question, since I spoke about this in my candidate's night's speech. But I think that for the town of Goffstown, we need to be looking to, for ways to actively engage residents more effectively, more consistently. And the town does a great job at putting out content and we do a great job at pushing information out there, but we need to find ways to engage members, community members, on a more regular basis and more effectively. So I think that there's a multitude of different things that we could explore, but as far as cost savings, a low-cost solution to that, that we can be working on actively is something like bringing in an AmeriCorps member into play, something that's low-cost, somebody who can work on gauging the community and what their needs are. I think all the town departments do a great job putting content out there, but we need to be continuously exploring ways to push content further. I don't know the best solutions to that issue, all of them. I think something like a community assessment would be great, some focus groups to kind of figure out where that lies. I know that the library has actively been engaging people and it's something moving forward that we really need to focus on.
And Collis, how would you respond to trying to increase, you know, communication in the town?
Well, I think communication is extremely important. We need to make sure that our voters and our citizens are informed to the greatest extents possible. We need to take advantage of all of the media that's available to us. Social media plays a huge role in each of our lives these days. As a member of the Board of Selectmen, I've tried to bring about ways to access and leverage those media outlets so that people are informed and engaged, so that when they make decisions and they cast votes, it's in a well-informed manner. The Board has worked to develop its webpage in a way that is much more expanded than it has been in years past. So I think we've done great strides. There's certainly a lot more that can be done. And as we look towards other media outlets, I think it's important to seize those opportunities when we can and take full advantage of those.
Thank you, Collis. And Mark?
As far as the communication aspect, I will agree with the two candidates sitting to the left of me. Those are, those are some of the most important things that we need to make sure that we provide for the people that live and work in the communities, the town of Gofftown. We currently have a system in place. We have cameras. Every meeting is videotaped. Meetings are online. They're, every form of media that we have is available to us already for the people in town. I, I'm not sure what, what else we can do, Scott. We've already got a very good system in place. Again, if I were to be elected and we had that chance, I would, I would probably make that one of my priorities, to see how we could bring new ideas of communications technologies and things like that, so that the people in the community would be able to get a full picture of what's going on in town.
All right. And lastly, Richard?
Well, I think that social media would be a great way to get in touch with voters in Goffstown. And I think another thing that can be done is certainly clarifying the routes in which that people can be reached. And I'm talking about the selectmen, as well as every other board and committee member. Just making sure that people know that we are reachable and that our, their ideas can be heard at any given moment. So opening up social media accounts for the town, making sure that the, especially the younger generations can reach us and are interested in reaching us. Youtube is a great way, putting out video messages from the town, clarifying the town board's positions on subjects and making sure that everyone is able to be reached by anyone.
All right. Thank you. So Collis, this is your next question. And it has to, it's kind of, it's topical in the sense of the recent events in Florida. But as we're gathered here today in the media center, and the question deals with schools. And as a selectman, how would you go about partnering with the school district to make sure that our schools are safer?
Well, this sort of touches back on the first question, which is communications. And I think that there's at times a lack of good communications between the Board of Selectmen and the school board. I think we've seen this over the years. So I think we need to focus on that and engage more directly, both the civic side and the school side, so that we're speaking with one voice. And certainly, in my mind, there's nothing more important than safety of our children when they're at school, trying to learn, trying to become good, educated adults and valued members of our society. So I think it's incumbent upon us to make our schools safe havens for learning. And I think we need to take advantage of the various options that are available to us through grants and maybe even through some, some revenue streams that are generated locally here, to put in place measures that provide that security, to make sure that when our young people come to school, they're coming to school to learn and they're not coming in fear for their lives.
Thank you. And Mark?
I feel that education between the two boards, school board and the Board of Selectmen, is a key component here. We need to sit, have a clear path of what we can do in the future and what we can do to create a very clear picture. Take the education, the information that we give to the selectmen and to the students in school and to the teachers, make sure that it is also passed on to the parents. I feel the parents also play a very large picture in this, sometimes which seems to be forgotten, but parents are also a very large key in this thing. They need to be well-aware of what goes on in school. They need to know what their son or daughter or significant other is, is being prompted with. It's, it's a two-way communication street that we need to develop and we need to keep that avenue open with Board of Selectmen, school, parents, through education, emails, things like that.
And finally, Richard, what are your thoughts on this?
Well, I think that a major piece of it would be in putting in place easily accessible resources for students, especially in terms of things like mental health and, as one of the school board candidates mentioned, anti-bullying measures. Making sure that all of our students are able to come to school without feeling like their peer group is a threat to them, so that they can focus on their education. Making sure that all students feel that they have someone who they, who they can go to in times of need, if they're feeling any, feeling any feelings that would place other students or themselves at risk, to make sure that all students can fully understand that they are not alone and that their only route is not to become violent or reclusive or any type of negative response.
Okay. Wild card from the moderator on this question. We have an SRO in the high school, School Resource Officer. Do we need one in all of our schools? Yes or no? And give me 15 seconds. So we'll start with you, Kelly. Yea or nay?
Can I answer the last question first?
I'd like you to answer this one first and then I'll get, I'll get you back on that. School Resource Officer in all of our schools, yea or nay, and a quick reason why?
Yes, because it's a dedicated person to day-to-day operations within the school as far as safety is concerned.
Collis?
Absolutely. I think that the students need to know that they're supported in their day-to-day lives at school.
And Mark?
Yes, I believe we probably should have more than what we have currently in place already for the safety of the students and the well-being of the teachers as well.
And Richard?
I think as many as we can get is, is, would be a great route to make sure that the schools are safe. So more if necessary, but certainly one in each school at minimum.
All right. We'll go back to Kelly. You had a question that you want to ask one of the other candidates, or?
No, I just want to answer the last question.
Okay. I'm sorry. That's right. I'll go back to you. I apologize.
It's all right. We started going that way. So as far as the Board of Selectmen being involved with the school board, I think it's important to mention that Superintendent Bulkey put out a video this week informing parents of what the school is currently doing. I think that they're already taking great strides in, in looking at all of these avenues for ways that we can make our schools safe. I think the board can be helpful in facilitating relationships. The police department's very involved. And I think with the Board of Selectmen sitting around with all of the other departments and the school board, we can come up with some other ways to help foster kids, keep them safe, and also take into it, into account that there's a student rep on the school board who attends the school. So maybe getting more involved with representation from kids in that regard.
All right. Thank you. Any of you have any questions of each other on this? Just curious. All right. Richard, we're going to start with you on this next question. So there's an article on the ballot this year and it has to do with funding eight full-time firefighters so that the stations can be manned overnight. And the fire chief recommended the article at the deliberative session. However, the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee voted to not recommend it. And some of you serve on these committees and you voted a certain way. So for those of you who hold an elected official, and there are three, an office, and there are three of you who do, can you please explain your vote? And for the newcomer, Richard, can you let us know what your position is? So we will start with you, Richard.
Well, I think that the fire stations absolutely need to be funded. I think that placing, placing firefighters in our fire stations is extremely important in the sense that there is not only a risk to life, there's a risk to family displacement. And I think even, even if we, if we funded for a full year, eight full-time firefighters so that the station's manned around the clock, it would only run us under about $750,000 based on the figure that was brought forward in the amendment. And I think that that is kind of a low ball in the value of a human life. So if we save one life, we've made a profit, in my opinion. So I absolutely support that article that was brought forward by one of our voters.
And Mark?
I was one of the members that voted against it. It was a very hard decision for me to make. We have a system in place that's working sometimes and failing sometimes. I feel it's up to the opportunity of the people that live in the community, this town of Gofftown, to make that decision. Some people want it, some people don't want it, and some people are looking at the almighty dollar. I know you cannot put a life, a dollar value on, on the life of, of a person, but my decision has been made. I stand by it, I stick by it, and it is what it is.
All right. And Collis?
Well, I didn't want to see the selectmen take a position on this. I think when it comes to issues with, that have that significant amount of fiscal impact to the voters of this town, I think it needs to go to the voters. And I think the voters need to make up their own minds and cast their votes based upon what they know of the situation and how they want the town to proceed. I can tell you that I support full-time firefighters and full-time fire department in this town. We're the 16th largest community in the state of New Hampshire. We do not have a full-time fire department. I think that's deplorable. I think a fire department is an insurance policy, just as a police department, just as a DPW department. They're, they're ensuring the health and safety of all of our lives. I think that's paramount importance. And I think it's one of the things that we owe our residents is to feel comfortable that they have those insurance policies in place. I can tell you that a decade or so ago, I had a very nasty chimney fire. Well, it was more than that. It was 20 years ago. Very nasty chimney fire. I was lucky. It happened during the day and there were firefighters on, on, on duty in the stations. I hate to think about what may have happened had it been in the off-hours and we're relying on call firefighters.
Thank you. And Kelly?
As a member of the Budget Committee, I voted no to support this. Chief O'Brien brought this proposal to the Select Board in a, in a different way. And the way that it was presented to the Budget Committee, I couldn't support it. As a taxpayer and as a voter, however, I am very interested in looking at the best solution for this problem. I'm not entirely sure nor convinced that eight full-time firefighters at the current rate is the best way to solve this problem. From an HR perspective, there's a lot to be had for employee retention and there's, there's lots of positive reasons why we should be doing this. I actually sat down with Chief O'Brien last week to talk about this specifically. And him and I talked about some possible solutions for, if it doesn't get voted on in this upcoming election, how to, how to re-approach that. And we talked about putting together a community board that would be a mix of residents, elected officials, firefighters, and kind of sitting down and reevaluating the situation, because this proposal has been shot down a bunch of different ways. And, and I think there is a need and a want and a desire for more firefighters. I think there's an educational part that has to go along with that. And I think it would be good for us to regroup, add some new brains to the table and kind of figure out the best solution and the best way, looking forward.
All right. Thank you. Any of you want to tackle each other on this particular issue?
Well, I'd like to rebut, if I could, please.
Yes.
Unfortunately, we find ourselves in a very difficult situation in Goffstown. What's happening is we're relying so much on call firefighters and part-time firefighters that we bring in individuals who have a burning desire to become professional firefighters. We invest money, we train these people, we provide the best equipment for them. What happens is they get trained here and then they move on to other communities where they have full-time fire, fire departments. And we spend a lot of money and a lot of resources training these people only to see them move on. And I don't think that's the best use of our resources when it comes to the fire department.
Anyone else? All right. We'll move on to our next question. And I'm going to preface this one by saying, "Only one." All right? So as a member of the Board of Selectmen, what do you perceive to be the top priority, only one, and how would you address it? And we're going to start with you, Mark. Top priority, again, only one, and how would you address it?
Economic development. I've, I've been a strong proponent of the economic development. The economic development brings in the infrastructure of the town, which is what we need, what we need to look at. The infrastructure is very important. If we don't have the infrastructure to support what we currently have in town, whether it be new or old, things are going to fall apart, things are going to break, and we're going to end up with, with some very serious issues that could cost us a significant amount of money. So for me, I have to say it's the Economic Development Committee that is one of my favorites.
Okay. Richard, I'm going to go to you next.
Well, I think that my top priority would certainly be safety, because everything comes secondary to safety. You can't have good economic development or a good education system or, or anything in that vein if people don't feel safe living here. If people don't feel safe before they move here, they're not going to. And we're not going to have businesses move in when they could risk losing their investment to a fire. Or we're not going to have people bringing their children here to be educated if they feel like one day their home could be, could burn down and they'd be displaced and have to move their children, go through the stressful move of moving their children multiple times to different school districts where they have to meet new friends and they have to start, in some cases, behind their peers. So certainly, I would think safety is my top priority.
And Kelly, what about you?
Mine would be the tax rate. And I, I think that's sort of a sneaky way of saying everything, but for taxes to be assessed, you really have to break things down on every level and look at things as want versus need. And you have to sort of reason with yourself of what's important, what's more important. And to keep the, the tax rate affordable in Goffstown, we really have to break down things line by line. And that, to me, is, is very important because growth ties in with that, structure ties in with that, infrastructure ties in with that, taxes.
All right. And you, Collis?
I think the most important thing that the Board of Selectmen does is bring forth a fiscally responsible budget for the taxpayers and the citizens of Goffstown. As you mentioned, or I think Kelly mentioned, there are wants and there are needs. We need to address our needs first and make sure that our needs are adequately addressed, and then we can turn our eye towards the wants. But it's very important that we look at and we, and we start that budget process early on. And I'm pleased to say that during my tenure on the Board of Selectmen, we've brought forward budgets. And this is a testament to the work that this board has done with budgets, is that now, as opposed to my early years on the board, the Budget Committee makes very few adjustments to the budget that the selectmen brings forward to them. And I think that's a testament to the Board of Selectmen, starting the budget process early, meeting with department heads, setting goals and expectations, so that the department heads bring forward budgets for their departments that are realistic and that, that mesh with the goals of the selectmen and the community at large. So certainly the fiscal bud, the fiscal house on the side of Gofftown.
Do any of you challenge each other in terms of what you think is, isn't a top priority? Or do you all, you're all comfortable with that question and ready to move forward? I see nods. We'll move-
Well, I'll elaborate a little bit.
Okay.
If you will. I think a fiscally responsible budget plays off to all of the other things I've heard here. Safety, schools, and a lot of things that we've talked about. That all stems from and flows from a fiscally responsible budget. And that starts with the Board of Select, or Board of Select, well, starts with the Budget Committee, but ultimately Board of Selectmen.
All right. So Mark, we're going to start with you in the next question. And there is an article on the warrant, and that's to add funds to a capital reserve fund for the town to purchase land. And you know that we have, that was on the ballot last year. How do you see these funds being used? And not particularly a location, but more like a strategic focus. So why, where do you see the money, you know, if we're going to, if we're going to put this money aside, and I believe it's a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
What, what do you think is the strategic purpose for, for that? Or what's your vision of that?
My vision, I believe, is when we focus again on the growth of the town or whatever the needs of the town are, whether it be for road improvement, whether it be for making a new, a new building, a new space. If, if the land is available to buy, we, we get together as a joint committee, we make the decision whether we're going to purchase the land. If we purchase the land, we can definitely use the land to our advantage at a later date. If we buy something now, let's say we spend $120,000, two years down the road, if it's still available and somebody needs to buy it, it may be double or triple the price. So if it's available to buy, whether it be for a new building, a new park, new parking lot, a road plan, road, roadwork, whatever, again, it's, it just, it deals with having availability to do that and having the money available to, to make it available to us so it'll happen when and if it does happen, so we have it.
And Kelly, we'll go with you on that as, as a follow-up there. You know, what do you see as the, you know, the purpose or the focus of, of putting money aside for that purpose?
Well, I think it gives a great ability to let the town snatch opportunities that come up. Wants and needs change from year to year and things that kind of fall outside of what's budgeted or what's even expected. You know, we might put through a budget or go to CIP and opportunities become available and it gives up, gives us the opportunity, whether it's buildings or lands, it helps give us the space to kind of look to that forefront of what could we use this for? How can this be accessible to the community? I know there have been talks about rotaries and things like that, where we're able to purchase land and kind of move towards growth. So I think it's important that we have that money available for the, the Select Board to kind of do what they deem necessary and for the taxpayers to trust in them to make the good decisions to do so.
Thank you. And Collis?
Well, I, as a member of the board, when we developed this capital reserve fund for land acquisition, that was for a number of reasons, but the thing that really triggered it was we were struggling with how we were going to make improvements in the downtown area, specifically the Elm Street, High Street, Main Street intersection. How were we going to deal with that to make improvements? Because that is a bottleneck in town. It's a dangerous intersection and there was no opportunity. You had many engineering studies done as to how we could address that intersection. So we established this reserve fund and it came, and it played a very important role because we were able to quickly purchase the one mass, North Mass property so that we would control that property. So at some point in the future, we'd be able to develop an intersection there that, that would help improve traffic flow and safety in, in that portion of town. So I think it's really important so that we can take advantage of these opportunities. It's a seller's market. You've got to be ready to move on a moment's notice. And if you don't have cash in hand, it's going to go to somebody else. And when you have limited amount of properties available in areas closely, or densely populated, like the downtown area and like Pennardville, when parcels of land become available that are important to the town, we need to be able to move quickly and act quickly. And we can only do that if we have, have a capital reserve fund for land acquisition.
And lastly, Richard?
Well, I think that my major focus as a selectman would be making sure that all the funds that we do spend, because it's not our personal money that we're writing a check for, is something that every citizen on a day-to-day basis can see a good value in. So that means if they're interacting with a, with a certain department that needs a new building, that they're able to go in and see that, hey, this is, this was a good use of what ultimately is my money, but is our money as a community. So I think that just making sure that every penny is spent in a way that's conscientious of the fact that every voter is pitching in to fund these projects. And it's not just our own money that we're writing a personal check for. We have to be more careful with the voters' money than we are certainly with our own, in the sense that everyone deserves to feel the improvement that would be made with the funds that are available.
All right. Collis, we're going to start off this next question with you. And I want you to think of your crystal ball. Okay?
I think Jim Reimman already made-
You got that?
-a joke about that earlier.
Richard, you got your crystal ball?
I got it.
You thinking about it? All right. So what is your vision for Goffstown 10 years out? What do you, what do you, what's the, what's the vision? Because selectmen need a vision. What's your vision?
Well, my vision is to bring the infrastructure that's needed in town to bring economic growth to the town. I would like to see Goffstown in 10 years have expanded utilities available to it, natural gas, expanding sewer, sewer to areas of town, bringing in natural gas, bringing in those types of infrastructure that'll improve all of our lives. If we can do that, we will make our residents' lives better and we will attract business to town, which will help grow our economic base and thereby have a positive impact on, on the taxpayers in this town. So my vision would be that we grow it that way.
Okay. And Mark, what do you think? What's, what's your, what's the grand vision?
I will, I will echo what Collis just said and I will give an example of that. This year, we met with the, the natural gas people in town. We have added the natural gas to Heel Street, Ivy Street, and in that, in that area there. That was not available before through planning with the Board of Selectmen and the, the gas company. The additions have been added to the town. We now, we now have made a, a resource available so that we can better serve the community. I'm, I'm a firm believer, you've heard me say it all night, roads, sewers, electricity, water, all of these things are very important things for the future of the town. Without, without those amenities for the town, we will struggle. As I, as I said to somebody today, we're a very unique town. We have a mountain, we have a river, we have a major highway that kind of divides the town. If and when we make a decision on what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, A, we're either faced with the river being in our way, B, some, some major road being in our way, or C, the mountain. We have a lot of ledge in town. We have a lot of things in town that we have to look at and focus on. Buildable lots and lands becoming hotter and hotter to, to purchase in this town, only because of what I just mentioned. So for me, it's the infrastructure, making sure the safety of the roads, the sewer, the water-
Okay. I'm going to have to-
Yep, that's fine.
Cut you off there for a second for time's sake. And Richard, what about you?
Well, my major view would be that the town continues to have a certain vibrancy to it, where people move here because they want to see their kids well-educated and because they want to do their business here. And they want to, they want to drive on our roads on a day-to-day basis. And certainly, a big thing would be schooling. I want to see the school continue to achieve highly, move students through in a way that makes us one of the leading school districts in the state, great athletic program. And I want to see our roads well-maintained and all of our safety institutions managed properly and well-funded.
All right. Thank you. And lastly, Kelly?
I think for me, what I hear over and over again is people are drawn to Goffstown for the small-town feel, the community. So that's a very important thing that we, we need to keep. But I think looking forward, we have a lot of opportunities, knowing that some of our buildings are going to need to be reconstructed, that we can start looking at partnerships for ways to improve those buildings, a new library, a new school, and kind of looking at how to work together and how to redesign. When we're talking about utilities and bridges and things like that, that's all incredibly crucial to not only maintaining, but the growth of our community. I think expanding business development and economic growth in any opportunity that we see in the Pennardville area, in the Village, wherever we can fit that in. And I think just really kind of recognizing that there's going to be a new generation moving into town. We have kids growing up here. We have new families moving in. And all of that in hindsight, I think when we take a step back and look at the bigger picture, which all of our departments and boards do on a regular basis, really finding the best places to connect those, those partnerships will be really important.
All right. Thank you. The next one, this one, we're going to start off with you, Kelly, again. And as a member of the Board of Selectmen, you're often required to deal with issues that have the potential to divide the community. They're contentious. They get, they get heated. You know, how would you deal with that type of situation in which there's definitely bitterness between residents in terms of a decision or an issue that you face as a select person?
Well, I think the context definitely derives how you handle a certain situation, whether there's sort of pre-work you can do leading into it, if you, if you kind of know. know. If it's a spur-of-the-moment thing, obviously, you'd handle the situation very differently. But I think that when you have complex issues, it's, it's very important to come with, with information. And we've all expressed that communication and putting out content is very important. So I think trying to help educate as much as possible beforehand kind of alleviates some of those feelings. And also having well-prepared answers and great support, like, you know, Adam coming to, to the town deliberative sessions to kind of diffuse situations where people get very passionate, and then when they're explained and answered with great solution, they, they kind of understand. And I think doing that legwork to sort of help diffuse some of those situations by making a clear, consistent message. Again, it's all very situational, but I, but I think, again, really pushing out that communication piece can kind of help have, let people have a better understanding when they're coming into something that they're very passionate about.
All right, Colas, we're gonna, you follow up on that one?
Yeah. Communications is so extremely important when it comes to these issues because they're very, people are very passionate about these things and it touches their lives deeply. You heard me talk earlier about the episode in our community's history with Plan Panardville. It was a great attempt by the Planning Board to try and make improvements in the Panardville area, but the hue and cry that came from the residents in Panardville was something that I've never heard before. I happened to be chairman of the Board of Selectmen at that time. We had hearing rooms that were filled to the brink and flow, overflowing into the hallways. It was obvious that this was a passionate issue that was dividing the town. We had the one, one sector of the town who wanted to make changes to Panardville, that you had the people in Panardville who didn't necessarily want that and felt as though that was their domain and they weren't being heard. So as chairman, I suspended some of the rules of procedure of the board. For instance, the three-minute limit on people to talk, I let people talk as long as they wanted to because they were passionate, I let them speak as many times as they wanted to. So, you know, it was obvious that there wasn't enough communication that was done upfront relative to what the Plan Panardville initiative was all about. So the communication broke down initially and it continued to break down, but I, I think in the end, it was a good and appropriate response to what we heard from, from the citizens.
All right, thank you. And Mark?
I believe communications is a very important item that we have to deal with. Open forum meetings, coming together. If we come together as a group and as, as a whole, I, I feel that's a major step in moving forward so that we can come forward to the town with a positive plan. I know we're a community of 18,000 people, we will probably not ever please everyone, but if we come together as a group and we format a plan, come up with a plan, I'm hoping that that plan will appease everybody and make the people that are looking for satisfaction be satisfied.
Thank you, Mark. And Richard?
Our public hearings and town meetings are a great tool. Just having people coming out and making sure that their voices are heard goes a huge way in dealing with those things that are very contentious. Making sure that people, even if they don't see their result, their intended result pass during the elections or, or on the ballot, they feel as though they've made a contribution and even, even though they didn't get what they wanted, they don't feel as disappointed because, or frustrated that they hadn't had their voices heard. So as Selectmen, it's our job to make sure that everyone feels comfortable and able to reach out to us and come out to the town meetings and have their voices heard on the issues.
I'm gonna throw a little wild card in here. A lot of folks don't go to meetings. How do you engage people who like to stay at home? How do you do that? And Richard, we'll start with you.
Well, I think that just making, making it well-known that we even have the town meetings is extremely important. In my time, I've gone out and gone door-knocking, and some people don't know that the town meetings are even being taken place, and that's not their fault, that's the fault of the local government for not letting them know that the town meetings are in fact taking place, or what time, or what date, or the location. So just making sure that people know when and where to go so that they are able to get their voices heard and feel engaged in our system of governance is very important.
And Mark, you know, how do, how do we deal with it? I mean, less people, you know, we talked about Jim Raymond, mentioned it earlier, where, you know, there are not as many folks going to these deliberative sessions, and fewer and fewer people attend Selectmen or School Board meetings. People are comfortable with their remote control or watching it on their, their smartphone. How are you gonna deal with that as a Selectman?
You kinda took the words out of my mouth, Scott. I think we've kind of made it so comfortable that people can sit at home, they can sit in their own comfort of their chairs, they can watch, they can sit, and they can listen and come up and formulate a plan. As far as meeting postings and, and meeting dates, places and time, I feel GTV does an awesome job. The Board of Selectmen, we post meetings, Town Hall posts meetings. I sometimes think we overpost meetings, but I just think it's today's society, Scott, with the computers, with the, with the smartphones, it's available to us. And today, society is very busy, things are different, people may watch these meetings on the run, live-stream. I think we've created that disaster ourself.
All right. Colas?
Yeah, that's a really difficult one. You know, the old saying is you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. You know, we do our best to try and reach out to folks and make them aware of what's going on. I think we've made great improvements over the last few years, certainly while I've been on the board, in making GTV, expanding their role, providing additional staff and additional monies. Let's face it, folks can sit at home and get the same information as if they, as if they would if, if they had to leave and go out into the cold, say, and go get that same information. I think the role that GTV-16 is playing and 22 is playing is extremely important, and I think we've done a great job in trying to improve the services that, that those, that the GTV brings to our residents so that they can find, get the information they want, not necessarily during the time of the meeting, but additional times throughout the week and throughout the month. So I, I think that's a really important thing that we've brought and made available to, to our residents. And, you know, we give a lot of, a lot of kudos to Adam and his, and his folks and the resources that he's brought to educating our folks.
Kelly, what do you think?
Well, I, I definitely agree that the town does a good job putting out content, we do a good job posting meetings. But I'm gonna kind of circle back to the difference between putting out content and engaging residents. And, and that's where the disconnect is across the nation. This is not a problem that's unique to just Goffstown. I've, I've done research on this, and, you know, municipal elections, town meetings, things like that are definitely affected on a national level. Times are changing, and a lot of municipal departments still operate on bases of things that have worked in the past for certain groups of residents or, you know, socio-economic places, and, and we need to be looking forward to ways to improve that and how to get our message out. So we're, we're fulfilling our responsibility as far as content is concerned, for sure. But to get people more involved and actively involved, they, they need to feel like they're being connected to what's happening. So that's never really been in the scope of what the Select Board's doing. And that's kind of where I was coming from with doing a community assessment, figuring out how residents want to have information be brought to them. What do we need to do to get people more actively involved? Because I think there's a lot to be taken in from the 16,500 people that aren't voting in our elections, aren't coming to meetings, aren't doing things like that. If people feel connected, they're, they're gonna be actively engaged, and they're gonna vote for leaders who think that they have their best interests in mind, and, and they're gonna be involved in the community. So yeah, I'll, I could talk about this one for a long time, I'll stop.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, Richard, we're gonna start with you on the next question. As a Selectman, how would you create relationships between the Board of Selectmen and all the different departments and committees in town? You know, how would you go about doing that?
Taking an extremely active role and just making sure that everything is being properly communicated. I think there were three or four amendments, or articles, rather, that were put forward on this year's ballot that some Budget Committee members expressed frustration that was not brought to them to be scrutinized by them. So that's clearly some sort of miscommunication or, or just a failure in effort, and I think that the local government needs to do that, and I think that the voters deserve communications between each and every department.
All right. Kelly, I'm gonna jump to you on that one.
Yeah, I just wanna follow up quickly with that. So the Board of, I'm sorry, the Budget Committee is not required to review those articles. I, I think where that was coming from, and, and there was no miscommunication in that, the, the Board of Selectmen are completely within their rights to push that information out and recommend those articles without the Budget Committee's approval. But that being said, I think that, excuse me. Sorry, I just totally lost my train with the-
You know what? That's okay, because we will go to Colas, and then we'll come back to you.
Great.
All right? So Colas, you know, you've been a Selectman. What have, what have you done, or what do you wish to continue to do to build relationships with different committees and, and department heads?
Well, I think the Board does a pretty good job. That's not to say we couldn't do more, but we do have representatives from the Board of Selectmen who sit on various committees. Right now, I represent the Board of Selectmen on Parks and Rec Commission, the Conservation Commission, and the Sewer Commission. And I think being there at those meetings and having FaceTime with each of those committees is really important, and allows us to bring back issues of concern for those various commissions and boards to the full Board of Selectmen for discussion, to look for ways to improve operations and improve the way that we interact with the public. So I think we're doing some of that, we can certainly do more, I think we should, I think we could be better. We also do a lot of stuff, and if I could just circle back a little bit, we do reach out to citizens through our website, we have surveys that we do, we ask questions, we, we seek input from them, and I think that holds true when it comes to our work and relationships with the various committees, commissions, and boards.
All right, thank you. Kelly, back to you.
Thank you. I'll try to hold in my coughs. Yeah, I think that the relationships are great, that we're doing that, and I think that we can always be doing better and, and reaching those people more. I've, I've heard that in the past, that there were Selectmen rep involved in every single department, and I think that's something that's incredibly valuable that we should be bringing back and reinstating. I know that times change, processes change, and, and we definitely need to have, you know, trust that our department heads are doing what, what they need to be doing, but they've expressed interest in, in bringing that back to have a sounding board. I think process improvement, having the board be approved, I'm sorry, reviewed on an annual basis would help us kind of consistently look at our processes and, and be finding ways to improve. So I think just really opening that communication dialogue to make sure that we're really fulfilling everybody's needs is, is important.
All right. And lastly, Mark, how do you feel about this?
Scott and Colas, you've been on the board when we had this. I would bring back our annual all-boards meetings with all the department heads. We used to have a meeting once a year, we would get together, we would format a plan, put a plan together, and we would try to have some strategic goals set for the year and work through those issues and through those points of interest through all the boards. As everybody has said, we have members on each committee, we have a good flow of information that, that comes and goes. Maybe it's time to go back to meetings every week instead of every other week. I know we have a lot of meetings that are every other week, and we have a lot of meetings that are every week. Maybe it's, maybe it's come time to look at that format, change the format, and maybe go back to having meetings every other week and adding that meeting back once a year with all the department heads and have an open dialogue with the, with the department heads on, on their issues.
All right. Anybody wanna add anything on this one? Richard?
Well, I would add that the, although the Budget Committee is not required to hear every single item that is, ends up on the warrant article, that doesn't mean that they shouldn't, and it certainly doesn't mean that the information shouldn't be given. You can't just decide, I don't really care enough to scrutinize this piece of legislation that's being passed. You have to look at every single thing to make sure that every penny is being spent in a totally responsible way.
All right. Anybody else?
I'd like to rebut a couple of things if I could. The suggestion of returning to every-week Board of Selectmen's meetings, I think what we need is efficiency in government, and I think that's what we've, we've achieved over the years, is providing efficiencies in the way that we exchange information, that we prepare for the meetings, and that we deal with the issues that come before us at each of the meetings. Meeting every week, just for the sake of meeting every week, I think is not an efficient use of time. I think we, as board members, have a better, would better serve the, the public when using our time if we do independent study of the issue so that this upcoming meeting, we can speak clearly and articulate positions on those issues. I'm not sure of the suggestion relative to a review of the performance of the Board of Selectmen, I'm not sure who would perform that review, how that would work-
That's usually the voters.
Well-
Oh, I was referring to the, the department heads or anybody directly related.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Sorry.
All right. All right. So this one's gonna be a little bit of a tricky one. I don't know, did anybody like, be on the, like, the debate team? Anybody? Didn't have one? They don't have one in Goffstown, right?
No, yeah.
All right. Well, so what we have here is we have two experienced Selectmen, and we have two relatively, they're newcomers, right? Is that fair enough to say? But I want you to now, I want you to wear a different hat, okay? So, Richard, we're gonna start with you. Why is it important to have experience on the Board of Selectmen?
Well, I think that this was mentioned at the event that came directly before this, that continuity is very important when it comes to the leadership of the town, in that we need people to be able to recognize their own faults and fix them, as, as opposed to every single year having a totally new group of people leading us. So I think that simply being around and being able to, being able to recognize your own faults and fixing those as opposed to replacing everyone every year is, is definitely a good thing.
All right. And Mark, this is a different question for you. What is the benefit of having a newcomer, one of, you know, Kelly, you know, you know, or, or Richard on the board? What do you see, what's his benefit?
As it was, as it was said earlier tonight, Scott, it was said several times, that young blood, new blood, new ideas, new suggestions, a new frame of mind, new thoughts. It's nice to have the old, but it's nice to have the new as well. With the old and the new, hopefully we can combine the knowledge that the old people know with the new, and, and combine it with the new, the new blood coming in, that we could come up with a, a plan that will appease everybody and make everybody in town feel, feel that the Budget Committee, the Board, not the Budget, the Board of Selectmen are doing a, a good job at what, what we're doing for the, for the community.
So Colas, how can the board benefit from having a newer member, a new member?
I think fresh blood is great. I think all ideas are great ideas, and I think new ideas fall in that category of all ideas. I think great, all ideas are great and welcomed. We certainly all have to recognize that we can all do better at what we do, and we can all do better at what we do by listening to others, including others with new and fresh ideas. You heard me mention that I received a national award for leadership, and I think that's because of my ability to listen and work with folks, including new folks, who bring that fresh blood and those new ideas to the board is a good thing. So, you know, I think any organization, whether it's a town or a, or a professional organization, benefits from new, fresh ideas and new faces.
And Kelly, same thing, same question that I gave to Richard. Why would it be beneficial to have experienced, experience on, on this Board of Selectmen or to, to have that level of experience all across the board?
I, I think it's great when you can kind of add your history in. You know, these gentlemen have been long-serving volunteers to the community, so they have a much different perspective on things that are going on within the town, within the department. You know, they have the history, they're more comfortable with the, the going-ons with, you know, different RSAs and things like that. They bring different life experience to the table, and, and I think that has to be said for everybody who's involved in a board, obviously, we all bring different experiences. But I think specifically, in longevity, you start to retain more of that and, and can look at things from a different perspective of what's been tried before, new ways that things could possibly be tried again. I definitely agree that a good blend is very valuable, so taking that more comfortable side and bringing it with the, the maybe new and more daring side of things is, is a great mix that's an asset to any community or organization.
Okay, I have one last question, and this is my question. It's a hypothetical, and I'm gonna give each of you a million dollars, and you can spend it in Goffstown on anything. It can fix a problem, it could be something brand-spanking new. So I want you to think about that, give you a little bit of time. I'm gonna give you a million dollars, and I wanna know how you're gonna spend it. Anybody wanna volunteer to go first, so I don't have to put pressure on anybody? Richard?
Well, I think that one thing that I mentioned earlier on tonight is, and it doesn't even use up the entire million dollars, is making sure that the fire stations are fully manned around the clock and year-round, just making sure that everyone feels safe and is able to move, move here, knowing that their children, their, then their, their other dependents are able to feel safe and certainly are safe from the risks to life and property.
All right. Anybody else wanna volunteer? Mark?
I would take that one million dollars that is, is graciously given to us, Scott, and I would divide it up between all of the police, fire, highway, parks and rec. I would take that million dollars and I would, and I would spend it very wisely in, in every aspect that we could. we could, whether it be to buy some new police cruisers, to buy new protective clothing, new SCBA's, contribute some money to the parks, to make the parks better. Highway, new plows, new whatever. I would divide that money up fairly amongst the town. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to leave anybody out, and I...
All the children are getting something.
Correct.
Candy at Christmas. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
That's my...
Okay. And Collis, what about you?
Well, I guess I'd respectfully disagree with the Selectmen of May. I think in this type of a situation, I would want to target those money at a specific issue that we need to deal with. And I'm going to reiterate what I said earlier, I would target that money in improving our infrastructure. Because as we improve our infrastructure, we make the lives of our residents better, we attract business, and we make our community stronger and more diverse and more dynamic as a whole. So I would target infrastructure for all of those reasons.
All right. Thank you. And Kelly, how about you?
I think that to do something different, and because it's my money to spend or to give, I would let each department bring a specific idea to the table and do a vote on which, where the money should be spent. I think that's a fair way for needs to be assessed, whether it's a CIP item or, you know, something that's a really big need, not just wants, but something that would be an improvement to the community for everybody. And let everybody bring that to the table and then have a vote on which would be...
All right. So moderator discretion, two of you gave a generic answer, and I want specifics. So I'm going to go to Mark first. You got to, you know what's going on in this town, and I'm giving you the million bucks, and you can't divide it up. Where's it going?
Going, can't divide it up, huh?
Nope. It's going to go to, it's going to go somewhere.
It's going on the budget to lower taxes for the people in this community.
Okay. Kelly?
Well, I like that answer as a taxpayer.
You can, you can...
You can second it if you want. It's your call, but...
But I think, well, there's a couple of things on the warrant articles that I would really like to see for, if I think of something that's revenue generating for the town. So let's say, for example, that the production screener, something simple like that that we could purchase and then use for revenue for the town would also help us be more effective at doing our own projects, we're not have contracting out, something along those lines. I think it's hard to pick a specific generalization, but...
And that's, and that's fine. So with that, I want to thank, I'm sorry, Collis, you...
Couple of rebuttals or critiques if I could.
You may, but you will also be critiqued if they choose to.
Absolutely.
Okay. It's your fair game.
I'm here while you're... I think, you know, to give the, first of all, to give the money back to the taxpayers is a temporary feel-good thing for the taxpayers, but it's a fleeting feel-good. I think if you improve infrastructure, you improve the lives of the residents and businesses in town, you improve it over the long haul, and it's a feel-good over the long haul. Thank you.
Mark or Kelly, anything that you want to respond?
I would just say...
You can wrestle if you want for this million. It's up to you.
I mean, I just, I agree with everybody's answer, but I will still go back to the fact that you're going to take that pot, and I would divide it up fairly, equally amongst all of the people in this town, not the people, but the Parks and Rec, highway, and everybody like that. I mean, you're addressing the economic development, you're addressing the needs of the departments and things like that. Either way, I mean, we take money from the unfunded, unfunded balance and we spend it on things. I mean, we lower, we lower the taxes and we lower, we lower funding by taking money. I mean, we have that fluff pillow in place already, as I'll call it. I still stick with my original answer, divide it up amongst the group.
And that's, and that's fine. Kelly, I'll give you the last word on that one if you'd like it. You're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Pam said 10.
What time is it? Am I...
So with that...
This is debate, we still should be debating.
With that, I want to thank the four candidates. I just want to let everybody know again that all the questions, with the exception of a couple, were from them, and I think it was truly telling to see what are the priorities or what are the issues that are important to the candidates. I think that we should all be very pleased with the quality of the four candidates that we have here. No matter what happens, you know, at Election Day, I think Goffstown's going to be in good hands with this group of four people. And again, I want to thank you for staying late and doing that. I'm going to give you one minute to kind of close and to say your piece, and then we'll be done. So who would like to go first? Kelly?
I think that these are all spur-of-the-moment, individualized answers, and I think it's very important to recognize that everything that's done within the town is done by the help of many people that are coming to the table. So while these ideas might be what we're bringing up as things that are important, I think that we've all kind of stressed communication and teamwork are also a very important piece of that puzzle. I am very accessible by Facebook, email, by phone. I'm happy to answer any questions. I have a series of Coffee with Kelly at Apothica for residents to come out and sit with me and have discussions. I'll be knocking doors for the next month, pounding the pavement, talking to residents, letting them know about our election, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have for me.
All right. Thank you so much. And Collis?
Thanks. First, I want to start off, Scott, by thanking you for putting this together and moderating this discussion. That doesn't take up part of my one minute, by the way.
Hold on.
But I do want...
There you go.
I do want to say that I think knowledge and experience is extremely important, especially when it comes to the important roles that the Board of Selectmen play. I think I bring that knowledge and experience to the meetings each and every night and do my homework and bring forward the best product with a look and a glance and a nod towards the taxpayers and residents of Goffstown. Thank you for your efforts.
You did that in 24 seconds. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Mark?
It's not always the I in the selectman part. The selectman, I believe, as I will say before and said it again, it's the team. We all accomplish more together, we all accomplish more as a team, and without the help of Collis, without the help of everybody on the board, we work very well together. I just, I look forward to being elected, again, if I'm elected, to continue the support and moving the town forward and having positive endings and findings when it's done.
Thank you. And Richard?
At the heart of my whole philosophy and the reason why I decided to run was the fact that I want to expand the idea of participatory democracy. So that means making sure that every resident can be involved with the decision-making process. That means being able to call, email, text, reach out on social media, everything like that to make sure that they can suggest new ways to improve the town without feeling like they're being thrown an entire workload. Just the idea portion of democracy is very important. We have people who can execute those ideas, but we need to look to a new way to generate those ideas, and that means making sure that everyone feels they are able to bring